Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the October 21 Salisbury City Council Work Session. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight, and we'll kick it right off. First up is Neighborhood Relations Manager Kevin Lindsey and Youth Development Specialist Jer Michael Mitchell. Why don't you guys come up?
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mr. Heath. How you doing today?
I was fine.
Sorry, Jack.
So what do you have for us?
We have our community grant for the Youth Service Council, which we already started. We've had three sessions, we meet every second and fourth Friday, and we applied for a grant through a community foundation for $3,902. We were awarded actually $3,512, and we have to get an in-kind donation of $390 from a local business, a nonprofit, before the end of the term of the grant. So Jer Michael's been running it. If you have questions about how's it been going, but we think it's pretty important for our youth to be involved civically, engaged in the community of what's going on, and we're not a better person than Jer Michael Mitchell to lead that process.
How's the participation been?
So far, it's been good. We have 12 young ladies all together. Homecoming has messed a lot of things up because of the past couple, so we haven't had full participation yet, but so far, so good. A lot of young ladies are showing up consistently that have been there, and we're looking to November to present them to the kids to the city council.
Fantastic.
Okay, Jer Michael, what are the ages?
We look middle and high school.
Middle and high?
Middle school and high school.
You have a guy daughter that's in middle school. Get her.
We need some men.
But yeah, we have, we have, still have three spots left for any kids that are interested. We said we were going to max out at 15 this year, that way we can stay focused.
What's the grade?
Eight. It's middle school through high school.
So eight?
Uh, six.
Six is middle.
Middle school is sixth grade now.
It's been a while since she's been in school, ma'am. We understand.
It has, yeah.
Okay, middle school to high school.
So this is to accept the Community Foundation's grant?
Yes.
Any questions from anybody or any problems with it?
No.
Do the students get community service hours?
They do. They get community service hours. We have several projects that we're working on. Our first initiative is a bullying project that they have to do as part of our leadership project. Each kid has to go to their school and set up a bullying campaign, basically whether it be PTA or lunchtime or something like that. And we feed them, so that's the part of the reason.
That's a key. That's a key.
I'm going to get with you because I have a child that needs to do something.
Me too. And do you know why that you're having such a, is it a problem getting the young men?
Boys just not interested. I mean, it's all, it's all groups so far that I've been a part of, even our partnership right now with the library. We got more females in the book club than we do males. A lot of males, if it really isn't sport oriented, they really usually don't get involved, but we've reached out to several, we just haven't gotten back. The girls were just quitting. We had 12 young ladies instantly, and it's from different, we got private sector, public sector, so we got kids from Salisbury Christian, Salisbury School, as well as Mardella, Parks Out Bennett. So we got kids from all over.
And you have how many spots?
We have three. We have 12 right now.
So you have 15 altogether.
Fifteen altogether.
So you really, if you had to, does that cover every school?
Yeah.
Pretty much?
Yeah, pretty much.
In the county?
Yeah.
Every middle and high school?
Middle and high, private.
Okay.
Throughout the county. It's just not city, it's county.
Well, I have somebody, and Jer Michael does too. He used to be a park.
Have you been doing a brainstorming session about how can we get the guys?
Guys, yeah, that's what I want to do.
We have. I've actually even reached out to different, more boy-oriented organizations. I think the biggest piece is that Friday, we meet on Fridays, every other Friday, so I think that's really the biggest piece because a lot of their football games and things like that, I mean, just falls on Fridays.
Yeah.
But we try to do it early enough, you know, five to six, 6:15, get them out of there. It's just an hour on time slot, but again, if you play football, you try to put the football mode before, of course, before five o'clock, right after school, you get in, get in together. So that's been all the issues.
Have you gone into the school systems?
Yes, I've been to every school. I've set up meetings. I've done announcements. We've been really been, we've been focused on this since April, so I've been to the schools. We've been on the announcements at the schools, set up lunch tables. We've done it all, but it's just been more girl participation.
I'm sorry.
This is just a thought, but for Choices Academy, have it right after that lunch shift, and they're right there. I know transportation is a lot, it is another big issue for maybe some of the kids, but you could have a captive audience right there, because if they're right there, they'd be willing to participate, a lot of those boys. There's a core group that would like participate, but I'm just, but then it kind of just means it's those kids in that school though. So that kind of limits it too, but you do have an audience there.
Yes, that's that piece of makes sure, because I mean, is it held at the fire station?
Yeah.
Fire Station 16 on San Francisco.
Is it any other reason that is scheduled for Friday?
Uh, it just works that way better. You know, it's just, that's the best day to have it.
For who?
For myself, for the people that's running.
I'm saying, because maybe if we could get the boys, if we did, possibly change the day.
Yeah, that's going to be hard with our schedules right now.
Yeah, and I think, just personally, a number of meetings I attend as an adult, there's not a lot of male participation.
Well, you have right.
So if I don't have someone that I work with every day, or a mentor, or a father figure not going to meetings and showing why things are important, why would that matter to me? And I notice that. And especially, you know, as an African-American male, I always tend to see like I'm the only African-American male there. So if that's another audience we're trying to reach, it's just not important to them right now. It's just not, if I don't see somebody do it, I mean, that's just a reality.
That could be another, you know, you know, yes, you'd like to be more inclusive, you like to include more boys from the area, but given those factors, that group right there at Choices, and actually, those kids do come from different parts of the county. So it's, I mean, it's city and county. So you could have some that go to Bennett, some that go to Mardella, some that are right from Jameson Bennett, so they, it could be a captive audience right there, right at the lunch, like right after that lunchtime.
Well, we've got, we've got 12 kids.
So we need three more.
And success breeds success. So if the program's successful and the word gets out, we might see more participation.
I don't think we did it last year, did we? No, I don't think so.
I think we did it one year and then stopped, so.
Okay. Go ahead. The program? It's run for four years.
I thought we didn't do it last year.
It was very small for the, I'd say four full, four full years, and then we had a year last year. It was a really small group that was just there briefly. But just, just a thought, you know, interacting with other cities that have civics council programs, two things that seem to be included in those that are successful. One is there's, there's some level of sitting as a body in a room like this, you know, being a council at some point. You know, whatever's on the agenda, whether it's discussion or deliberation over, you know, whose proposal to vote into effect, or, you know, to vote on other things, or to learn simply some of the things that a council does, those are, those seem to be indicators of success that I've seen in other communities. And the second is I've seen some communities that have done something that we've never tried here, which is adding a level of competitiveness to the appointment side of things, you know, making it, you know, feel like a special appointment that they're pursuing. And I don't know exactly how to do that, and also how to reach some of the young people we're trying to reach. And there might be a hybrid process there, but one community, I know what they did was they had the social studies teachers make nominations, and then the people running the program made selections, might have even done interviews, I don't know, but made selections on the basis of the nomination, so it was kind of like a competitive process. Something to consider.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have consensus to accept the funds?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Good enough.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a good one.
Same to you.
Best of luck.
See you, Jack.
Good afternoon. All right, next up, we have a budget amendment. Chief Tull.
How are you?
How's everybody?
Fine.
Chief Gladier is joining up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So the first item that we're here to discuss is a request for approval of a budget amendment for reimbursement of insurance proceeds that we received from the local government insurance trust. We had an ambulance that was involved in an accident, had some bodywork that had to be done to it. Typically, Legit pays the vendor directly for the repair work. Unfortunately, this time, Legit sent the check directly to the city and not to the vendor, so we paid the invoice out of our operating vehicle account, so we're asking for that money to be transferred from that check to our operating account.
Is that, that doesn't seem, has that ever been done before?
What's that?
Where the Legit, we get the money from Legit?
The proceeds?
Yeah. Oh.
Years ago.
It's usually the insurer of the other insurance company.
Okay.
But the proceeds from Legit, I think we've gotten those before.
Yeah, they've done it before over the past.
Because I remember doing this since I've been on.
I'm going to say probably the past three and a half to four years, probably. Legit has been, they would pay the vendor directly. So the adjuster would come, assess the damage, work with a vendor of choice, then they would pay the vendor directly. And that way, if there's any additional repairs, that vendor would work with Legit. It takes the city out of messing with it. But this time, there was a change in Legit staff, and the person sent the check directly to the city.
As long as we get our money.
We have the money. It went into the city, and we're asking for it to come to our department.
Any questions?
No.
Consensus to move it?
Yes.
Okay. Number two.
Number two. This is a request for a budget amendment. As you recall, the council approved the surplus of two vehicles from the fire department. One was a 1999 Crown, Ford Crown Victoria, and a 2005 Chevrolet Suburban. They were declared a surplus, auctioned. The city received roughly $5,226 from that auction sale of those two vehicles.
You probably want that back.
We are asking for that money to be transferred to our vehicle operating account, or our vehicle repair account.
You didn't want to hand that over to Mr. Howard and his team? They just left the room. I'm sure they'd come back.
I'm sure they would like it, but I like it a little more.
I think that's reasonable. We have consensus on that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon. Be safe.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, next up, the city clerk's going to do this, Assistant City Clerk.
May I stay at my seat and do it?
You may do it right from there.
Thank you. Every, every year when we have an election, we have to be prepared in the event that we have a tie in any of the races, and that would be the five council districts and also the mayor's seat. So this, we have worked up, gotten information from the McComica County Board of Elections Office to get an estimate. We originally had looked at this for four, for four districts because, as being the most, because District Two is uncontested, but if for some reason there would be a tie for the mayor's office, that is citywide, and we weren't sure if that would mean there would need to be a place in each district for the mayor. So hopefully, our goal is no tie election. But we're bringing this forth as we have in years past, that we would do a first reading on this the 28th, and we will have had the election the 5th. If we still need to conduct any tie election in any district, then we would be able to bring this back for second reading. If we do not need to do it, then it will just not come back, but it gives us the time because we have 45 to 60-day window after the election to run the tie election.
Got you.
So if that meets with your approval, we'd like to bring it for first reading on October 28th.
Got you. Questions from the council?
Just in case.
Is that, suppose, nobody votes for an uncontested candidate?
Yeah, or a write-in campaign develops and...
Well, that's why we...
That's not considered a tie. I'm just trying to lighten things up.
That's okay. We're just trying to cross our Ts and dot the Is and make sure we have it if we need it, and as I say, we hope that everything goes well and we have definite outcomes on the 5th.
We have consensus.
Thank you.
So we can bring it for the first reading. Next up, we have a discussion on the revised documents that we have received. Did everyone receive the revised documents? And I'm assuming, Mr. Tillman, that the documents we received is the one that's associated with, or copied from, Annapolis?
Yes. The state law change, as well as the proposed ordinance that would go in this Salisbury City Code, are both taken from Annapolis.
Are there any substantive changes to that, to their original?
What I wanted to point out was last time, we were, there was some concern about the use of the alcohol control board language.
Yes.
And what that is, that's what Annapolis did. In other words, the state law says the Board of Licensed Commissioners, but then the council has the ability to set up sub-boards, or, you know, boards that are subservient to the council itself, and they just pick this other name. And so I just picked the same name. It probably is clearer than it is for alcohol, whereas the Board of Licensed Commissioners doesn't indicate what it does.
Could be any license.
Yeah. So, I mean, but it's, you can call it what you want, but it is not controlling, it's not like the Wycomico County Liquor Control Board. It's a different thing. It's a different animal entirely.
But Mark, I'd say the danger there is that there's, that they're so similar. The nomenclature is too similar, and the people would be confused by that.
We could call it the...
Salisbury Alcohol Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Yeah, alcohol.
I like that better.
Something that's different from...
Yeah, I like that better because just the perception of it.
The control board language is used in this county already.
I think they, they want a different name because it's supposed to be a subsidiary board, so we can come up with something that makes it clear.
Let's do that. I think we're much safer doing that, so. We have consensus to make that change?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The one thing I would suggest, however, is that we probably, the city should probably send an administration official to go to the Annapolis Board and say, is there anything about your law that you've had trouble with that you wouldn't do again? And then, I mean, I can contact their attorney, but it probably, from a practical, this would be a, is there a practical issue you have now because of the way this is written? If so, share it with us, and we'll do something different. That would be my only suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to send somebody there, or you?
Oh, yeah. I think in a couple weeks, we can certainly get somebody up there. We have the delegation lunch coming up, so, you know, we're about to have that conversation. I mean, if we can get somebody there beforehand...
We could have done it last week.
MML, yep.
Could have done it. That's right.
I'll see if we can get somebody there. So Ms. Glanz and Mr. Kitzro are traveling at ICMA.
Right.
My schedule's not going to allow me to be up in Annapolis this week, but perhaps next.
Yes.
Maybe.
Good.
I'll call the city solicitor, just to see if, he may or may not be aware of something. That's why I think we ought to talk to the actual administrators, they might have a better handle on it.
I've read this several times, and I don't have any issue with the way it's set up, with the exception of the fact that name change.
Okay.
The 29th.
All right, so we'll wait, we'll wait for that.
The other question I just, in here, under, it's on page three, 7.03.070, where it says the city clerk shall provide administrative support for the board. Is that?
Not typically how we set up our boards, but there are some. Elections and ethics, I think, or no, ethics is not.
They attend ethics, but we attend ethics.
Ethics is administratively supported by the administration. So that's probably something we'd want to modify.
Yeah.
But I don't know who it would be. We need to think about it a little bit.
Because I think they...
Frankly, more boards than I like, would like are administratively supported by the mayor's office, so I prefer to keep it out. So it could be police department, staff, you know, there's several people who could probably do that work. Could be code enforcement, you know.
Why don't you just think about that and then come back, and we can...
Refinance, yeah, we'll work on that. But yeah, I mean, city clerk, we'll call that a placeholder, knowing, knowing that we want to change that.
Okay. I like the finance office.
Because if the police is going to enforce the piece of it, you really don't want them administering, administering that.
Well, it'd be, but it's different. It's not a, it's not a, well, is it, would it have quasi-judicial?
They do.
Yeah, they do. That's the thing. You'll have police officers testifying.
That's right.
That's why I like the, I like the...
But currently, they are paid by the board, the police officers who testify, because they are sent by the board. It's an activity of the body. It's not as if like a department, or an agency, or a barracks goes out and does their own freelancing to catch, you know, people serving alcohol underage. It's an activity of the Board of Licensed Commissioners. So I don't know whether or not we'd want to get in that business, be in that business, let them continue, you know, let the county continue to do it. I think that's an unanswered question, as far as I'm concerned. And again, if we took over all authority, we'd have to take over that responsibility.
That's, that's even in that one, that one part, so.
Yeah, they would, under this scenario, if there were, if there were an issue with a license suspension, it would be heard by the city.
By the board?
Yeah.
Well...
That's where, if we issue the license, that's where...
Whoever you pick to administer this is going to have to be someone who is used to dealing with like the Board of Zoning Appeal. It has to be somebody who can be a clerk to keep the record straight and run it like a judicial operation.
Mr. Mayor, why don't you just think about it and make a recommendation?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll consider that. So things that we need to do in the immediate term is determine which department's going to be responsible for staffing and visit with our friends in Annapolis.
Right.
Any other research items you want us to, to work on between now and then?
I don't think so. I don't have any.
Those are the two big ones, I think.
So we have the name, the name change, the...
I'll take care of the name change immediately, and I'll contact the city solicitor for Annapolis to find out if he's aware of anything.
Once we get this finished, what's the process from there?
So we, we've got to find somebody to introduce it, the bill.
In the Senate?
Yeah. Well, I mean, either one.
We have at least one sponsor in the House confirmed.
Right.
Why don't we wait until our, I mean, before we start, you know, counting votes, at our meeting with the Eastern Shore delegation, let's have our conversation with them.
Yeah.
You know, I've spoken to most of the Eastern Shore delegation already. I'll make some more phone calls before, between now and then.
Okay.
And anyone you're comfortable with calling, call.
Yeah, I have, I've started, so. I know you have. Okay.
Keep calling.
So keep, keep calling.
Please.
We'll try to, try to get enough folks.
Reception has been positive thus far.
Yes, it has. Okay. Nothing else on that. That takes care of the items on the agenda.
For the open...
We have some students from, I recognize.
Oh, my.
The guys. How's everybody?
Good. Good evening. What do you guys find each other?
What's your...
We're not that kind of...
You're six and a half years late.
This is about as ugly as it gets, so.
Yes.
You're six and a half years late.
Your key word when you go back to class is going to be alcohol. Okay? Alcohol, that's your key word.
I can read an essay about alcohol.
Look at that.
Well, that's all they talked about.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to be role models, good ones.
I'm glad that you, you came to a work session, because it is, have any of you been to the regular meetings?
No.
Okay. That's why I remember when we were there, we said, come to a work session, because the formal meetings are just very little discussion, because all the discussion is done here. So we thank you for coming, hope it was helpful.
Can you, I'm sorry.
Questions?
Because we came in a couple minutes, like the first two gentlemen.
Could you, could you come up to the podium?
Oh.
Just run up. So we can get you on, we got to get you on.
Recorded.
They're getting you on the transcript up there.
We got to get you on record.
This is a chance you'll never have again, so take advantage.
And not to make you nervous, you are going to be on live TV.
You're right up there. Yeah, you're on TV, by the way, so. Question?
Can you tell us what the grant was for the first two gentlemen when they were here?
It was a, it was a grant for the Youth Civics Council that's being put together. They applied to the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore. Kevin Lindsey is the...
Neighborhood Relations Manager.
Neighborhood Relations Manager, and Jer Michael is the Youth Development Specialist. So they came and said, essentially what we did is we gave them approval to accept the funds from the Community Foundation to fund the project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Here, Bill, there.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify, so what you guys were looking over for the alcohol committee is you're worried about the name change and certain wordings of certain things in the, in the document itself, because it would make it confusing, or give you like a job that you guys don't want to do.
Let me give you a little bit of a background so that you can know where it's coming from. Right now, the county has the control, alcohol control board. So what we want to do is we want to be able to, since the majority of the licenses that are issued by them are inside the city limits, we would like to have control over those licenses. So we are not taking on the control board's responsibility for the dispensaries. That's separate. So if we had our control board and their control board, it might get confusing, and it's a very sensitive subject. So that's why we're going with licensed commissioners.
And what will that, so what is the main purpose of that board then?
So if you're going to open up a restaurant in the city of Salisbury, so right now, you would go to our, no, you would go to our Business Development Center, and you would do all your applications for everything you need to open up. And this is one more application the city would handle, and then it would go to the different boards or whatever to, for approval, and this is one of those boards.
Okay. So you guys have to approve everything?
Yeah.
So it has to be okay with you guys?[1789.33] Should it have to be okay with you guys?
Yeah, so the license would come from the city, uh, if you're gonna open up a restaurant that's gonna serve beer or wine, uh, you would go before this board to get the license.
Okay.
Four, four, four and a half years ago, um, our process for somebody coming into the city to start up a business was sort of disjunct, it, it just, uh, and now we have what we call a one-stop shop, where we try to get, like if you came in for, for a business, a restaurant, uh, you would meet with, um, the fire marshal, you'd meet with the Planning and Zoning, you'd have everybody right there, so you don't have to go all over the place. This would be another piece of that puzzle if you were a restaurant.
Okay.
So we're trying to make it as easy as possible for someone who's, wants to come to the city and start a business
Okay.
Uh, to do that.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Nothing else? Okay, thank you again for coming, uh, anything for the good of the order? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, the city council has just come out of a closed session, uh, at five twenty PM, uh, to discuss a legal matter regarding a potential lawsuit to be pursued by the city. Seems there's no more, no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.